All right, well, it's six o'clock. I think we'll go ahead and get started. Councilman Hensley, if everybody would stand, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, teach us to be generous. Teach us to serve our neighbors as they require, to give of ourselves and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heed the wounds, to toil and not to seek for rest, to labor and not to ask for reward, except to know that we are applying our best judgment and efforts to the betterment of our community. And we pray especially for our neighbors who work to secure and protect our public safety, who put themselves between danger and the rest of us, day and night. We are grateful for them and for all that they do to keep us safe. And I ask you to join me in a prayer for a brave, young, Moro Heights charger who had her tonsils removed today, that she may feel comfort and healing, and save a couple popsicles for Dad. And for all of the unspoken intentions and prayers of those assembled here, we say amen.
Awesome. Thanks for everyone being here. Next item is roll call.
Allers.
Present.
Deacon.
Present.
Hensley.
Present.
Lester.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Schwartz.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Wiseman.
Present.
Great. You have an agenda in front of you. We need to act on that when you're comfortable with it.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any miscellaneous agenda items? All right, public hearings. I don't think we have any scheduled for tonight. Appointments by the mayor, we do not have any. There will be some coming at the next meeting, so be watching for that. Presentations from staff consultants, invited guests. We've invited Missouri American Water Services. Do we have represented this? Welcome. If you want to come to the microphone, introduce yourself. And we appreciate you being here and all you do for our city.
Thank you. Thank you for being, thank you for having me. First of all, I'm extremely grateful to be here in front of you, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about Missouri American Water's lead service line replacement program. So, little history, Missouri American Water has been replacing lead service lines since about 2017 across all of our districts when we run into them through various maintenance-type work on service lines or on a water main replacement project. But we are getting ready to ramp up and target lead service line replacements in Jefferson City. Okay, so I brought with me a prop, just to kind of show everyone, right? So this is, this is a lead service line, okay? This was from inside of a home, and this is the internal stop and waste valve that you see inside your home. But what's really indicative of lead is this gray color that you see. And also this lead wipe as well, where it comes together here, where it bulges out, right? Very indicative of lead. Another thing, you can, you can hit it, and it's just a dull thud noise. And so some of the ways we tell the difference between lead and other materials is a scratch test, a ting test, right, color, galvanized actually, a magnet will stick to it, right? So, what's driving this? This new regulation changes, right? So the EPA has issued the revised lead and copper rule, which is, comes into effect, and all municipalities and water utilities must comply by October of 2024. Really, drivers behind this is just to protect public health, right? So, the primary objective is to develop a service line inventory, okay? And that service line inventory is to identify material on both the company side of the service line and the customer side of the service line. So Missouri American Water is not unlike a lot of other municipalities and water providers. Customer-side information is not well-known, okay? Company-side information, well, it depends, right? Depends on how well the records have been kept over hundreds of years in some cases, right? Especially in these old river towns like we have here in Jefferson City. We've done a lot of research on the tap records that we do have, and actually, to my surprise, some of the older stuff does have customer-side records, okay? But it's been 100 years, and some of those service lines have been changed out. So really, what, what we're wanting to do first is develop an inventory, and as we find, we replace, okay? So this year, we're kicking off, just to start, we're looking at homes that were built before 1940, okay? Generally, lead was used from the early years of the late 1800s up until about 1930, 1940, when the industry started to transition from lead to copper, okay? And sometimes today, we're seeing more, more plastic, right? But there's a lot of unknowns out there, so the intent here is just to find, right? We got to see what's out there. So we've, we've identified about 2,000 parcels in Jefferson City that, that we would like to investigate, okay? The, the most productive way and the most cost-effective way to get this done is to do an inside inspection. What comes through the home, right? Okay, so that's going to be step one of our process. It's really communicating here with you to help us get our customers engaged to do an inside inspection. Once we get inside and we see something like this, we're going to be able to communicate with the customer right then and there, what's good for a replacement, right? And Missouri American Water is going above and beyond the current rules and regulations. The current rules and regulations are just to develop a service line inventory. But we have a goal of removing all lead by 2030, okay? So that is above and beyond. Now, we do feel that regulations are eventually going to move in that direction. Current regulations today do require that you at least put together a plan for lead service line replacements. So step one is canvas, door knock, we're sending letters, trying to schedule with our customers a time to come inside. If that does not happen, we still need to work to identify some material. So then we'd be looking to exploratory digs, so hydroexcavation. We've partnered with Hunt Environmental Services, Ricky's here today. They're going to be out there knocking on doors. We're getting them badges, let's say Missouri American Water, too, to help with some comfortability. We're also going to be sending letters and sending out blaster phone calls to our customers, too, reminding them of this effort. And, and really, we've been, we've been doing this since June of last year in St. Louis County and in St. Joseph and also in Mexico. It really comes down to engagement, right? It really comes down to our customers getting involved and getting engaged. So this program is developed in such a way that when we do have an engaged customer, it's important to get them scheduled to get them replaced. So we've also partnered with Stockman, Stockman locally, to replace lead service lines as well, okay? We have a budget this year of about $2.4 million here in Jefferson City. Big chunk of that's going to go to investigations, but then the rest of it's going to go to replacements. And then we anticipate from 2024 on to 2030, we're going to be investing approximately 3 million, 3 million annually in service line replacements here in Jefferson City. So my, my ask to you is to help encourage this program, right? It's, it's about public health, safety, it's for our children. I think we all know, and we all grew up with the concerns around lead, lead paint and everything else, too, and I'm still biting fishing weights. I need to get away from that, right? But we're, we're definitely out here to help support in whatever way we can, just to remove all the lead. So I'll pause there for a moment and see if there's any questions from council.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Asked a couple questions. The bulge on the pipe there, was that consistently done in that era of lead pipe installation? So if we don't, my, I guess my task another way, if you don't see that type of bulge on your service line and you're otherwise a layperson, is there a reason to think that it's, that it might still be, or could conceivably be a lead pipe if, if your house is of a certain age?
Yeah, so the lead pipe is indicative of all, I mean, the wipe, right, is indicative of all lead at joints, okay? So if you see this inside your home, you have, you have lead.
Okay, but if you, if you don't see it?
If you, if you don't see it, the other thing that we're looking for is galvanized piping, okay? A magnet can stick to that.
Gotcha.
So what is, what was also used in the period was galvanized piping, was the straight hard pipe? And then often, there was a lead gooseneck at the water main. So if we're seeing lead, I'm sorry, if we're seeing galvanized, we're replacing that, too.
And when you say replacing, you mean going all the way out to a main, not just what is coming into, not just the part that's touching the house?
Yeah, absolutely. And so our, you know, our leadership team had some good foresight into replacements of company and customer-side services. So it's at no direct cost to our customers, but we're taking on that piece of replacing the customer side with a customer-side agreement. We have a license agreement to be replacing their asset, right? So we will go from the water main through the foundation and to the internal stop and waste valve and make a new connection there. Anything beyond the stop and waste valve, customers, you know, responsibility from there, could be some old galvanized fixture, old galvanized piping and things like that still, so, thank you.
Councilman Deacon.
So, I guess it's clear, but you will, the, the idea is to replace the galvanized from the meter to the house, to the valve.
From, from the water main to?
No matter how long it is, I've got almost 100 yards from where my meter is. Boy, that'd be great. It's like looking through, so included in there?
Yeah, yeah, so all the way from main to and through the foundation, yeah. So the customer-side length will vary, right? And, but we're going to go ahead and replace the whole thing all the way through the foundation.
Were you done, Councilman Hensley? Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Spencer?
And those inspections are going to be, try to be done Monday through Friday. It won't entail weekend operations anyway.
So I, I think that really depends on how, how, how successful we are Monday through Friday. We, we have found that canvassing on evenings or on a Saturday can be effective as well. A lot of people are home at that time, too. So we're going to really be, be working within those avenues to, to be as successful as we can.
Just, and you're going to have, like you mentioned before, you're going to have proper badging and identification and all that. Some people, our comfort level is, is not.
Yeah, I know, in today's, in today's world, it can be concerned. So we're always going to travel in pairs of two. That's, that's for our contractor's protection, too, right? But they will be receiving contractor badges that say Missouri American Water on it. And in addition, they're going to have literature as well that has our name written all over it, that kind of goes around the health effects of lead, you know, you know, what a replacement looks like and, and things like that, too. So trying to make it as comfortable for them as possible.
Councilman Allers.
And when did you say that start date was going to be for, when you want to start initializing doing all this?
Great question. I didn't, I didn't mention that, but we'd like to kick off this month. So today, we just spent some time putting the, the letters together, and we'll be sending those out en masse here soon. Typically, we'll give them about, you know, five days to get out, and then we're going to do the blaster calls, and then we're going to follow up with door knocking, so.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Is there any value to customers being proactive and reaching out to you? You know, go down there, stick a magnet on the pipe and it, and it sticks. Should they give you a call, or should they wait?
So I would recommend that they wait to receive a letter, right? And then when they receive the letter, contact Hunt, and, and Hunt will either help them with the inspection or could work with them, too, to do some self-identification. We run into challenges with self-identification. I'm, I'm in the industry. I know what to look for, but not everyone does, so, good question.
Councilman Mealy?
Will there be areas of town that you can kind of exclude from your, you know, search based off of the year that the, you know, subdivision was built, things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So it was in 1986 that the EPA adopted the Clean Drinking Water Act. And in '88, Missouri adopted that, that ruling. And that, that ruling specifically stated that no, no lead in, in any drinking water fixtures. So anything post-1988, we don't, we don't have to do anything. We can really just designate that as not lead materially undetermined. But we will want to do like a 10% verification on that, just to make sure, right? So really, our focus is going to be on pre-1940 right now, and we're going to start down in the southern part of the system, the southeast part, because this, this was an area that the EPA identified as an underserved area, and we want to make sure that we, we, we target those underserved areas first. That's part of the, the, the new rule as well, to make sure we're touching those communities first.
And you said southeast?
Southeast, so some of the streets are the trees, you know, like locusts, maple, that, that are right down there, off of High Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks like you answered all the questions. We appreciate you being here.
Great, thank you for having us.
Thanks. All right, go to item B, Ms. Perry. You should have some documents in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first report that you have is the Revenue Model Report. For those council members that are new, I do want to point out that these reports are part of the packet that you receive for the Finance Committee each month. So the Revenue Model Report on the first page is just a summary of where the projected over and under budgets are for the fiscal year 2023. If you scroll back to page number two, you'll be able to see a breakdown that's more detailed than, than the summary page was. As you can kind of see here, we do have some areas of concern. We've got a, an undridge in the telephone cellphone utility. That has been the case for several years in the past, and we've tried, tried to adjust that accordingly. Seems we're still a little bit off track there. Surtax receipts are also under at this point. We could still be receiving some collections on those through the remainder of the fiscal year. And then as you scroll through to the third page, it just kind of gives you a, a better indicator of those individual accounts. Still have some issues in insurance claims and also in the building construction fees, which we'll continue to monitor. The next report that you have is the Sales Tax Revenue Report. These would be collections that were the receding period of April 2023. If you look, the first grouping is the General Sales Tax 1%. That particular collection came in this month at $1,159,734, which was above the projection. I'd like to point out, last month, we had some undridges that were pretty significant. This month, we have some overages. Doesn't seem to be a whole lot of rhyme or reason, which we've talked about before. You'll see the same thing in the Sales Tax H, collections $560,057, as were the collections in the Park Sales Tax. Both of those were over projected, over projections. And then the last grouping is the Public Safety Tax, collections $278,185, and that puts that $39,624 over the projected budget as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the sales tax, if anyone has those, before we proceed on to the next one.
We just, I, I know we just passed the marijuana tax. When will we start collecting on that, do you think?
Would you like to answer that, Ryan?
Sure. So under state law, anytime a new tax is passed, it is implemented the second quarter after the quarter in which the tax was approved. So April was the second quarter, so you wait two quarters, fourth quarter of this year, so October.
So does that mean we won't realize that until first quarter of '24?
Uh, I, I'm not sure what the distribution plan from DOR is going to look like, but collections will start in October. I would hope they wouldn't lag all the way to January.
Typically, if collections start, they'll designate it with a different indicator for me when I get the reports on it. So once we have that indicator, we'll add it as another item on this report as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Allers?
And all the undridges that we've, were seen prior to the month were all just through March, it looks like, correct?
March was in each of the four categories under the projections. We've had past conversations about this. We try and budget based on the collections that we receive in the prior fiscal year, but there also seems to be some differences in when we actually receive the funds from Department of Revenue. At this point, we haven't figured out what makes up those variances. But overall, each of the categories so far year-to-date are over the budget projections.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and the last report that we have is the Fund Balance Report. This particular report is the same as what existing council members would have seen in past. We haven't made any changes here. It's based on the FY '22 Unassigned Fund Balance. That is an estimated unaudited figure because we have not finalized financial reports from the FY '22 audit. But based on the number that we have of $8.1 million in unassigned general fund, fund balance, and taking into account all of the re-appropriations from FY '22 to '23, we're anticipating FY '23 estimated unassigned fund balance of $5,983,283. That is a 15.75% fund balance of the adopted budget. Projection of, or the, the fund balance policy that we have of 17% would be at 6.4 million. So we are slightly under the 17%, but it is higher than we had previously thought it was going to be. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I know the Finance Committee stays on top of this, but I appreciate you keeping the rest of the council up to speed on it. Good news so far. All right. Takes us to item 7C, Ward Four, Councilmember candidates introductions. Did you have anything you wanted to discuss, or should we just go through the list as they're?
I, I, I think, uh... Sorry, the city clerk put a list up, and so I think calling each, each of the, the applicants up in this order would be sufficient. And essentially, we're looking at about five minutes apiece for each applicant to make introduction and, and essentially give their statement to the city council. So this is a, essentially a one-way conversation to begin with. But I, I don't think there's any reason that the city council couldn't pose some questions if, if that is their desire. So we go ahead and get started.
Okay, well, as they came into, the city clerk, first name is Carlos Graham. There's a trapdoor there, so if you hit five minutes, he's kind of...
So lucky you all caught me with, sinus is really kicking, kicking my butt, so I will be less than the five minutes. Mayor Fitzwater and to the city council members, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to stand before you this evening as a candidate to come back to the city council. I've lived in Ward Four for 19 years now, and so I've had the honor and privilege of serving on the council from 2013 to 2021. Some of the tough issues that we were able to, to tackle in, in Ward Four were stormwater issues, and I do remember that once we started getting those stormwater concerns to rolling in, I do remember coming to the council, and we was able to get an extra million dollars put in the budget at that time for, to help address the stormwater issues, which allowed us to hire additional staff at, at that point. Safety issues were certainly an issue in, in Ward Four, as well as potholes concerns was there as well, too. So I think we were able to make some great strides when I was on the council, and so I look forward to picking up from day one and going back to helping to address some of those concerns and issues. I've been married for 22 years now. My wife and I have two children. We have one that's 33, and we have one that's 18. So our 33-year-old, we have one grandson, and then our 18-year-old is a senior at Jefferson City High School. So we're getting ready to make that decision as relates to where we go to college next, so. I'm very involved in our community. I've been involved since day one. I first got involved in our community in 2000 when I was asked to be a part of the Planning Committee for the Census of 2000 for the city of Jefferson. After that, I was involved with the Police Personnel Board. I think I was the longest member to serve on that board for nine years. And so I've certainly been involved and continue to be involved in our wonderful community. I currently serve on many boards and commissions. I'm also the chair, the board chair for Capital Region Medical Center. And I'm also the board chair for Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption Association. I also am a member of West Side Business Association, East Side Business Association, as well as Downtown Business Association. Proud member of the Jefferson City Host Lions Club. So as you can see, I'm very involved in our community, and I would love to be back on the council to continue my involvement and to helping the constituents of Ward Four address issues in which we do have. So that is my time, and hopefully I didn't go back, yeah, three minutes, so. I have a minute and 50 seconds. So I will ask, entertain any questions that you may have, or I hope this is the time to entertain any questions, so.
Any questions, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
And this is a question I'm going to ask all the candidates. If selected to fill this vacancy, would it be your intention to run again to hold the seat at the next general election?
That would be my intentions, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mike Michelson. Welcome.
Usually I have a piano in front of me when I do this, so it's a little different. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for hearing me. I actually have been a lifelong resident in Jeff City, born here, raised here, married the girl down the street 49 years ago, still my wife. And we've lived within a mile of where we were raised for all of our life, which is the fourth ward. But it actually wasn't when we first lived there, it was out of the city. But we have two children, and one of them is a lobbyist, another one works for a Supreme Court judge. Both my grandchildren go to school here in Jeff City. One of them goes to Cedar Hill, the other one goes to Lewis and Clark. And I kind of weighed heavily whether I wanted to, to get in and do this, but, you know, I, having grown up in Jeff City, my wife's family had a business, Tennyson's Furniture Store, till it was wiped out with a tornado. And my grandfather was the manager and part-owner of Central Hotel years ago, I don't know if you remember that, up on High Street. So I've got a vested interest in Jeff City, and I, I love Jeff City. And I've done a, spent my whole life doing music here, 40 years at the Ramadi Inn, and that was Truman. And then I'm now playing at Bones downtown, also been a registered lobbyist for over 20 years. So I've dealt with a lot of, a lot of different issues, a lot of different clients, a member of the Elks. And I do a lot of, a lot of charity work for a lot of different, everything from Samaritan Center to just about anybody that asks. So I, I don't come in here with any agenda. I don't have a agenda that I want. I just, I'd just like to see Jeff City move forward. I think we've got a lot of room for growth, economic development. I really think, a few people that I told I was doing this are like, got to get my roads fixed. I've got a big pothole down on Frog Coll Road, and, you know, all these different things that, that people are interested in. And, you know, I'm interested in those, too, and I'd like to see Jeff City grow and flourish because my grandchildren are going to be here, and so I, I think it's really important. And so, and I also got involved because I think we need some new ideas, some new leadership, some people that, that haven't been involved in this. And so I think to bring maybe just, if one or two fresh ideas would be great, if we could act on that. So basically, that's all I got.
Well, I know Councilman Hensley has a question for you.
I didn't want to steal anybody else's thunder if they suddenly had a burning question. Welcome. Thank you for applying, and thank you for being here tonight. I'll ask you the same question. If you were selected to fill the rest of the term in this seat, would it be your intention to run again in the next general?
Yes, it would.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for stepping forward. We appreciate it. We'll see you in two weeks. Kathy Harness, welcome down front.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, sorry. Forgot, I'm not at the legislature. Members of the committee, of the council, my name is Kathy Harness, and I have lived in... Members of the committee, um, of the council, my name is Kathy Harness, and I have lived in Jefferson City since, um, nineteen eighty-six. I came here with my, um, family for a business opportunity. I have two sons who grew up here and were, um, educated in the Jefferson City's public school system. I have, um, I have my own lobbying firm that I opened in two thousand and four, and continue to work, um, in, in that firm with my clients. I, um, work downtown, and I shop downtown, and I eat downtown a lot. So actually, parking is kind of on my list of things that, you know, hopefully we can talk about and reach, um, a consensus on some ways to eliminate, um, the, the problems and, um, with, with the parking downtown for, particularly during the legislative session, when we have a lot of visitors come to our city. I decided to run to, for this, um, or to put my name out for this, um, council position because my neighbors and some of my friends came to me, um, because they, um, have seen me, um, as a business owner and actually a leader in my, um, in my neighborhood. I, I do not come to this, um, council with any particular agenda. However, I do think that, um, our infrastructure, especially our roads, um, need addressed. I think that public safety is a big issue for us and is very important in any community. And, um, I think there was one other thing. And sound, um, development. I believe my, I believe my ability to, um, be a team player, take a leadership role, and, um, help build consensus among colleagues and interest groups is important and is, um, something I can bring to the council. I believe, um, city government should be a resource and a service, and not a barrier to our constituents and those looking to come into our city. I thank you for your time this evening, and, um, am happy to answer any questions. And actually, Councilwoman Hensley, yes, if I, um, am appointed to this, I, I will consider and would like to run for the council when this term is up.
Thank you for preempting my question.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Randy Wright. Welcome, thanks for joining us. You survived the five K.
I did, I did. I saw Mayor Fitzwater out at the five K run, with the Jeff City Board of Realtors had, uh, very early Saturday morning. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity, um, Mayor and council members. My name is Randall Wright, I do go by Randy. I'm a lifelong resident of the, of Jefferson City, was born and raised here. My mom and dad operated Wright Studio and Camera Shop, um, for nearly fifty years here in, in Jefferson City. Went to, uh, J.C., nineteen eighty-one graduate of, of J.C. So I'm giving away my age there. But, uh, also, I've spent twenty-two years in public service, uh, working for the state of Missouri, with several agencies, Public Service Commission, the latest one being the Missouri State Tax Commission, doing railroad and utility, um, assessments, um, for state-assessed, uh, properties, which eventually comes filtering down to, um, the entities including, including Jefferson City. So during two thousand twenty-one, I took, took advantage of, uh, the state's eighty and out, during the great retirement, as they said, during the pandemic. So I went ahead and, and stepped down, uh, from my job at the, the State Tax Commission, and, um, went ahead and, and, uh, you know, just went back to my, um, additional, uh, career that I have, which is I'm a real estate broker, I've been licensed as a real estate broker since two thousand six. And so I have my own and operate my own brokerage. And, uh, so that's what I'm, I'm doing full-time now, is, uh, the real estate brokerage business. One of the things that's motivating me, uh, to, you know, put my ne- name in the, in the hat for this position is, you know, I have, I have a, a great concern about housing in Jefferson City. I, I think that's really one of the issues that, that is, is a, is a big challenge, um, especially since the tornado, and, and, uh, you know, just the, the lack of, of, um, affordable housing, uh, that's available in Jefferson City. I see that quite frequently in, in working with clients as a, a real estate broker. So I think that's something I would like to, I would like to, to be on a task force for and, um, and help with that challenge. One of the other things that motivated me was the two thousand twenty census. You know, it, it, it seems like we're, we're at a plateau as far as, as, uh, our population. So, you know, I'm very much interested in, in growing Jefferson City and, and growing it, um, you know, through, through development and, uh, through the population. We need additional workers, we need workers for our factories, we need workers, um, uh, to, to help with everything in our community. So, uh, that's the things I would like to focus on if I'm selected for the, for this. In addition, I've served at the, um, Cole County Historical Society on their board for many, many years. I donated the entire negative collection of the Zeal Wright photos to the Cole County Historical Society, so that's where they currently reside. Hopefully someday they'll, they'll, they'll be able to digitize those and have those available to the public. But, uh, I, I definitely wanted to, to pass that on, um, and pass that baton to, uh, future generations with that great work that my father did. So, um, in addition to that, I, I also, uh, am serving on the, on the Capital Region Foundation with, uh, with Carlos there. Picked that up, uh, this year. And, uh, um, I would just, you know, would like to, the opportunity to, you know, um, work with you folks on, on, um, growing, growing Jefferson City. So that's really all I have. Thank you for the opportunity, and any questions?
I'll ask you the same question. If you're selected, would you plan to, uh, run again in the next general election to keep the seat?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Oars.
You mentioned about the housing and all that, and somebody I looked through there, we're under, that has your Realtor's license yet, I assume? What, what do you think are some of the, um, of things being held back? You think it's the interest rates being high on maybe some affordable housing being built? Or what do you foresee as some of the problems with, uh, housing in Jeff City as far as the financing part of it? Or the cost of materials and all that?
I think it's all the above, quite frankly. It's, you know, having enough investors with the capital to invest, you know, in, in building the housing that we need. Those, those impediments now are, you know, higher interest rates. If, if it has to be financed, uh, then that certainly, you know, adds to the cost, the materials and inflation, uh, uh, cost of materials, you know, also is an impediment, you know, to building, uh, building new construction. I mean, I, I'm amazed when I look at some new construction listings on homes that come on the market, and it's like a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and it's four hundred and forty-two thousand. And it's like, okay, who's gonna be able to afford this? Certainly not, uh, somebody just starting out. So, you know, the, the, I think there, it's a multifaceted, um, thing that we've got to tackle, and, and being able to attract, uh, you know, investors and, 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 and the capital that it's gonna take to, you know, build the kind of housing that we need. And then the affordable housing, um, you know, is a whole nother topic all in, in itself. And, and I think the city just went through, um, that whole thing with the affordable housing and doing M-H-T-C, and all of that, all of that got turned down. So, you know, that, that is something that we need to take another run at, um, and I think I'm almost out of time.
I just had one more follow-up to that, Ron.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Some of the lots that are vacant here in Jeff City, would you look at that as far as maybe some, uh, apartments or things along that alliance? Since, like you mentioned, uh, just a regular three-bedroom house, uh, below our house, there's, there're four hundred and fifty to four hundred and eighty thousand, just for a standard house. So is that something you'd be open to look at? And what, if the city has any properties available inside, uh, maybe setting a focus on that?
I think you hit the nail on the head. I think we need to focus on infill of those city lots and other vacant lots that are within the city, and even, you know, older parts of the city. There's a lot of vacant lots all around, scattered around the city. And I think one of the things I'd like to see is us focus on the infill of, of, of new construction to, you know, infill those vacant lots so that we have more density, you know, in our, in our core of our city.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie Allen. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity, I really appreciate it. About twenty-two years ago, my husband and I chose Jefferson City to raise our family. In fact, it was the Ward Four neighborhoods and the part of the Greenway that had been started that really, um, ba- formed our decision of where we were going to, to live, which was in Ward Four. And of course, our community has grown significantly in Ward Four, both with banking centers and new medical facilities. Quite a few new communities have grown up, and some restaurants, so a lot has changed in Ward Four. I've worked in Ward Four, um, quite a bit. An example is, a few years ago, I worked with Ward Four neighbors and came to the council. We all came to the council to ask them to not support, uh, what I call a tar facility on West Edgewood. And fortunately, we were able to move that somewhere else and not, not happen in, in that area. My service, uh, and I think all of our service is really what forms our city and our city's future. And some examples of my service, past chair of the board for U.S., First United Methodist Church, our church in town, the city's transportation and traffic commission, the Cap Region Board of Governors, Jefferson City Juneteenth Board, the N double A C P Board, and the Cole County M-U Extension Board. So those are a couple of examples. But I think like any community, we always have challenges and opportunities, right? And those are a lot of the things that have been talked about. Infrastructure, steady and planned business growth, our safe neighborhoods and streets, housing, our transportation, entertainment, recreation. And that's really for everybody, Ward Four and everybody else in the city. And an opportunity, for example, that's begun to gain traction again, is our MSP site development. And I think an opportunity and a challenge is really taking positive steps to allow for measured and planned growth of our community. The trick is really balancing these demands, leveraging our strengths and our weaknesses, and really, the tension interplays with our city's budget. And just like our pocketbook, we end up having things, we have to figure out, how are we going to balance this? And for Jefferson City, our city employees and our taxpayer dollars are really our resources. And of course, our city employees are so important. And it's important to use our tax dollars wisely, through innovation as best practices, modernizing, so we can give better services and the right services to our citizens. So with over twenty-five years of nonpartisan government service, I've overseen multimillion-dollar budgets, and I do understand well budgets. Now that alone, I don't think is enough. All of you all bring a lot of experience, as does everybody else. And really, finding those best practices, modernizing different areas. What are the innovations that we can do to really create that greater citizen services, but also maximize that budget, maximize our dollars, use them well? As a CPA and a certified project manager with skills and knowledge in, um, things including process improvement and organizational development, there's just a few examples I'll share with things that I've done. Of course, it's at a state level, and state and city are different, but there's just many similarities. For example, we collaboratively worked on a team where we changed motor vehicle title issuance from six to eight weeks to forty-eight hours. Tremendous change for our customers. And in a business process improvement, we saved taxpayers a half a million dollars in six months simply by changing the way we mailed out forms. So our strengths, our challenges, and our resources are like a three-legged stool. And it's by leveraging each of these that we, and coming in partnership with the community, that we can see results. So I bring that knowledge and experience, I would like to join with you, I have a lot of passion. I am committed, I'm known in the city and, and in the community for working together with people to get things done. And I want to join with you to create new sparks in Jefferson City, make it even a more beloved city. And I'm asking for your support and your vote for me, or nomination for me, whatever that process may be. And I do plan to run for the office, should I be selected, uh, at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilman Oars.
Hi, thank you. I'm just reading through this, you said wrote S-O-Ws for First in the Nation, First in the Nation Military Voting Portal? Could you, what's S-O-W for my?
Sorry, Statement of Work. Statement of Work, so it's really a contract, it's really a contract for, um, we were able to, through the state legislature and working with them, we were able to deliver and implement really the First in the Nation Military Voting Portal, and it was here in Missouri. Anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your question was preempted, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, we've got one additional person, Chuck Walker. I hope I'm using the right. Thank you, welcome.
Little bit taller. Good afternoon, uh, to the council, also to the mayor, the other candidates. I'd just like to say this, too, uh, the individuals that's here today, I've worked with all of them, I respect them. I look at this from the point that, being a law enforcement officer for forty-two years here in this community, this has been the base of my life. I've also created several... Let me, how would I would say this, and please forgive me. There's projects within the city for years when Chief Schrader was here. Uh, also, since, uh, Captain Wilde, who was at, a captain at the time, who was now chief. There are programs that's out there that have been disregarded. We would like some of those things put back into our community. When we had town hall meetings that were based upon the fact of drug issues here in our community, at one time, it was heroin. I worked on that project for seven years here in this community to get rid of that problem. Also, during that time, we've seen that fentanyl has come in our community, and the death rate in our community per capita, as St. Louis, Kansas City, and other areas, is way out of control. Due to the fact of the number of policemen that are now looking for other jobs, we're losing a lot of people. I think our main focus within this community right now is to go back out and take a couple of steps back and see how we're gonna go out and promote ourselves community-wise to bring some of these people back here that are gonna stay. We don't need officers that are coming in here and staying for two or three years, and then we've invested into them, and then they're gone. Due to the increases in salaries and other things that have been projected over these last year and a half, we've had those increases, and we've still lost officers. Why is that? Why don't we have that retention rate just like everybody else? Everybody's increasing their salary rates all over, so then the competition increases. So when we look at that from a community standpoint, we're seeing one officer come in from an outside area that may not be the perfect fit for us, and maybe that's why they're leaving. We don't know. But I understand this because I have a lot of people here in this community that come to me and say, "Hey Chuck, what are we gonna do about this? What are we gonna do about these problems here on the east side? What are we gonna do about problems here on the west side? What are we gonna do about..." There are shootings and everything all over this city. These five gentlemen that are on this evening shifts that are trying to protect us is not enough. If they end up getting on a position where they're on a call or anything else, and they're s- sitting there for two or three hours on a serious call, who else is protecting this city? So when I look at that from the standpoint of being a law enforcement officer and being in this area and fighting for this community for several years, this would be my primary focus to stay on. And then also working with the community, as well as Chief Wilde, and making a judgment call and working with you to make those changes. Lincoln University is increasing their number of students that are coming in right now. We've just increased the number of students that are gonna be... We've just increased the number of students that are going to be coming in from Sedalia through State Fair. We also have an increase of students that are coming in from Lynn-Tack. When I look at that, the population of the young people are growing as well. The gentleman spoke about the fact that our housing, when we look at that in, in our community, look at the number of houses that were taken out during the tornado, look at the growth of the new high school here that took out a bunch of residents. So, when I look at that, people have been displaced. I think that's one of the reasons why we have the problem in which we do in this community, because they've been put places where they are trying to take control of. And we have to monitor some of those things as well. And I know with some of the times, we don't want to hear these things, but if somebody doesn't come in and say, "These are some of the bigger issues that we have to look at and protecting not only you, but ourselves and our kids." I got my kids through the school system, and here in Jeff City, all of them have their degrees. My son's a Blackhawk pilot. He is away. I'm proud of him because we raised him here in this community. My daughter, three degrees, Lincoln University. So, when I look at that, my youngest son, thank you. And yes, I will run.
Councilman Hesley.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, would you please tell us about your youngest son?
Jaden was a problematic child. And me and my wife stayed on him just like every other parent does. Everybody else was pretty on the same track, but you always have that one. But the main thing is, is trying to keep him away from the environment that tried to control the fact, and some gentlemen, and this young lady spoke about marijuana in our, in our community. Marijuana is part of that where it's been created to end up being a financial gain. We see that. But the fact of it is, is this now, when we look at the fact of, of the other drugs that are here and losing lives, that's totally different. And that's when I came in to take control of my, my son's life and put him in another environment, so then that way he could grow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Yes, Councilman Oars.
Is your son Jordan Walker?
Yes, he is.
Did he go to Macaulay-Conception?
Yes, it did.
He was in my daughter's grade. I, I would just wanted to ask. I thought that's what, when you said Blackhawk, I thought, I remember seeing a picture on Sarah's site and all that. I just wanted to thank him and thank you for raising, raising your children like that.
Well, thank you. And also, we've got to look at it from the standpoint, and I don't want to take any more time. This is based upon us as a community. I know a lot of you gentlemen here are sitting around. I know a lot of people in which I've worked with. I see some people that I've associated with for years. That is the core group that got me to the place where I'm at today of forty-two years of law enforcement. But if I leave the position I am right now and I take a couple of steps back, I've lost that strength. We've got to sometime hold on to the power that we have to end up making these things work for us, because if I lose connection with you, I've lost connection with the community as well.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the six individuals that have stepped up and looking forward to moving to the next step. I think as was indicated earlier in the meeting, there is a public hearing posted for two weeks from tonight on the fifteenth, and then council will have the final decisions. Anything else at this point? All right. Thanks again for, for coming in. We appreciate it. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks. And you're welcome to stay. All right. Announcements by mayor. I don't have any announcements tonight. Counsel and staff. I know Mr. Smith had one, so why don't we go to that first, and then we'll go to the committees.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to just announce that our, our campus staff is having what I call a very creative event. It's going to be highlighting the, the capital area active transportation plan. This is kind of a follow-up to our, our bike and pedestrian plan that will take the place of that, and, and we're referring to is our pause and pedal event. And it's at the Jefferson City Animal Shelter tomorrow, May second, and it's going to be from four to six. And really, you could stop by and learn a little bit more about the active transportation plan, kind of the stages we're at, some of the projects that are going to be in the draft plan, learn more about that. If you're inclined to also adopt a puppy or some other animal and want to learn more about transportation, this is the perfect event for you. So, after that too, there actually will be a bike ride following that. There's going to be some door prizes. So, something to kind of get people excited to come out and learn a little more about the, the active transportation plan.
Perfect. Any, Councilman Oars?
I hate to keep asking questions.
You wanted to adopt a puppy? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. We've already had that discussion at the house. Are you aware of the, I received a letter from Ms. Gibson about the lack of maybe input from transit riders? And do you have any way of maybe following up with her or that department on getting more feedback from people who ride the transit?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So, we, we've communicated with Ms. Gibson a little bit and kind of thanked her for the feedback. I think she was looking at kind of the, our public participation plan for getting input regarding, I think specifically, items that really impacted Jeff Tran riders. So, we're going to take all those comments into effect and, and kind of reevaluate, I think, some of our outreach efforts when we go to that next outreach event that we may have. So, we try to take all that into consideration though.
Good. Thanks. All right. Committees. Administration, anything we need to?
We have canceled our meeting for lack of agenda items this month. So, our next month's meeting will be the first, I guess it's Wednesday of the month. Thanks.
Finance?
Due to another discovered conflict, we are again rescheduling the May finance committee meeting to occur on Tuesday, May twenty-third at eight o'clock in the morning.
Great.
Thank you.
Public safety? May twenty-fifth. All right. And Public Works?
Our next scheduled meeting will be May eleventh at seven thirty. I think the location is either in the Boom Bank Cuff Room or here.
I'm not for sure which, but it is one of those two.
Thank you.
And I know we've been juggling that around. We get electronics taken care of, so. All right. Anything else under committees? Anything else we need to announce? Presentations, item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We don't show anybody signed up. All right. We will go to item ten, consent agenda. There's three items on there.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item eleven, bills introduced, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road as a local historic landmark.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Sinzie to give an overview of the landmark award tonight.
Thank you. The Historic Preservation Commission received a landmark application road, or application for fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road. It's historically known as the Dewey House. The Dewey House was built in nineteen oh eight. It is a native stone bungalow. It is listed, already listed as contributing in the Frank Miller National Register Historic District. If you could see up on the map of the circle is where the Dewey House is located. Just between it is the McHenry House and the Nacy House, which are the three properties that are located within the Frank Miller National Register Historic District. For local landmark status, the HPC determines if applicants meet the designation criteria specified in section eight dash four-four of the city code. The HPC found the Dewey House met all nine of the following criteria. But especially was with the identification as a work of a master builder, designer, architect, or landscape architect whose individual work has influenced the development of the community, county, state, or nation. Frank Miller was a formidable architect within the community. This is one of the capstones that are located on the, on the property itself. Frank Miller also designed some of these other landmarks that you may be familiar with across the city, including Temple Bethel, as well as the Carnegie Library, residential homes along West Main, the Central Bank Building downtown, Carpenter's Building, and the Cole County Courthouse. And here's a front view of the Dewey House. Also located on the property are two contributing structures, including an old dairy barn and this garden shed. The HPC unanimously recommended the Dewey House for designation as a landmark award at its March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Public Works and Planning recommended sending its designation request to full council at its April thirteenth, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-three meeting. Is a staff recommendation that the city council approve the designation of fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road, otherwise known as the Dewey House, as a local landmark. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions? You answered them all? Thank you. Item B, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning two-point-four acres of land located at twenty-seven thirty-eight Rock Ridge Road from RS2 low-density residential to C2 general commercial.
I think we're back to Mr. Smith and Mr. Barron for a while.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Barron to give you an overview of these cases. Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor. So, this bill pertains to property highlighted up on the screen. Again, located at, on Rock Ridge Road, twenty-seven thirty-eight Rock Ridge Road. And it's located right at the intersection of Rock Ridge Road and Route C. And so, there's Rock Ridge Road, and here's Route C. And then this is the off-ramp for Highway one seventy-nine. So, there are stoplights at both of these major intersections along Route C. The applicant for this particular rezoning request is Glenwood Equities. This is a company that acquires and builds, you know, develops property, builds buildings specifically for, for, for use by the Dollar General Corporation. This bill would rezone the property from its current designation of RS2, which is a single-family residential zoning district, to a C2, a general commercial zoning district. I'll point out that, you know, on the screen, there is C2 zoning in the area, including some storage shed facilities located on Rock Ridge Road, and also landscaping business on the south side of Route C. This is an aerial photo of the property. There is one single-family home located on the property right there. And there is some topography, some slope to the property as it kind of slopes downhill toward Route C. As part of the rezoning application materials, the applicant did submit a conceptual development plan for the property, which is shown up on the screen. I went to stress that this conceptual development plan is not part of the rezoning application, or application. Rezonings are, you know, are not subject, you cannot make them subject to a specific development plan. It is useful to be able to visualize or envision what the intended development of the property is. But any development that's proposed for this property would go through the normal process of development plans, submittal, and review, and need to meet all of the development standards of the zoning code and other applicable sections of the city code. This conceptual development plan envisions construction of a roughly ten thousand square foot general retail building with a parking lot. It does show onsite sewer system on the property and driveway connection to Rock Ridge Road. I'll point out to the council that there was a significant amount of public correspondence that was submitted as part of this request. So, within your, within the council packets is a copy of the written correspondence that was received as part of this request. And within the bill summary, there's also a, a general overview of those who spoke and some of the topics at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This, this proposal was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on their April thirteenth meeting. It was approved, or recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on a vote of five to four, and scheduled for a public hearing in front of the city council on May fifteenth. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilman Spencer?
Question on, what was the reasoning for the developer not wanting to tie into the city's sewer system?
I believe it was the, it was a fairly long distance that would have to be, the sewer would have to be extended to, so as a measure of cost.
Okay. And, and the follow-up question is if, if this zoning for, at the next council meeting is denied, does it still stay at the designation of, designation of RS2? Or, or it hasn't technically been replatted or classified for C2 until the formality of the council passes it or denies it?
Correct. If the council passes the bill, it would be rezoned to C2. If not, it would remain the RS2, single-family residential zoning.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Just out of curiosity, in, in other property issues we've had, there have been administrative reasons or ways that property owners could, could, I guess, get the same or similar result. Is, if, if we deny the zoning here, can they, can they administratively get a same or similar result?
So, in terms of developing the property with a, a commercial use, it takes a zoning action of some sort. There may be multiple, you know, routes that they could pursue that zoning, the two, you know, most likely, or the current request of the rezoning to C2, you know, or some sort of PUD submittal, but it would take a zoning action.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Item C, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addresses eight-ten Eldorado Drive, accepting and approving the final subdivision plot of Dogwood Park subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, and amending section nineteen dash four-zero-one Schedule J, parking prohibited with respect to Eldorado Drive.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mayor. I get back to my spot in the presentation. So, this bill would approve a preliminary PUD development plan for property and a final subdivision plot. And so, the property is highlighted up on the screen. It's located on Eldorado Drive, roughly halfway in between Del Cero Drive to the south and East Elm Street to the north. And the zoning of the property is currently a PUD, a Planned Unit Development zoning designation. The applicant for this request is Josh Loggie, who's not the current property owner, but the intended purchaser of the property and developer. And here's an aerial photo of the property. As you can see, it's, it's fairly clear, open, and somewhat flat along the frontage along Eldorado Drive. Does have some slope to it toward the rear of the property and is wooded along the, the rear and kind of the southern portion of the property. And so, the PUD plan that would be approved with this bill is shown up on the screen, envisions eight residential duplexes, each kind of in a standard sitting on a, a lot, and construction of sidewalk along the frontage. So, each duplex or each, each pair of units would be connected to the road via driveway and have garages. PUD plan also shows a buffer yard, a natural buffer yard, and so that would be a designation to retain the existing forested vegetation along the back of the property. And so, there's, there's a line that starts at about fifty feet wide right here, and then extends out to about a hundred feet wide toward the southern portion of the property. And then also that natural buffer yard along the southern portion of the property located down here. So, adjacent to the closest residence home, single-family home there in the Del Cero subdivision. Up on the screen is a visual showing what the, the units are intended to look like, be affronted with brick veneer and siding. And then this is the final subdivision plot that would be also approved with the bill. And so, it shows eight lots, and so the- And so it shows eight, uh, lots, and so the intent would be construct, uh, one duplex per lot. And then also contained in the bill is a, is a parking, uh, change to the parking code, uh, where parking would be prohibited on the opposite side of the street from this row of duplexes, uh, and, uh, thereby parking would remain permitted on the same side of the street as the duplexes. So this matter was heard at the April thirteenth meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, was recommended for approval on a vote of eight to zero, and is scheduled for a public hearing in front of the city council on May fifteenth. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilman Allers?
Uh, Eric, I had two. I walked through there a couple of times, and, uh, I noticed where the, the last one, before you go up the hill on Eldorado, is that, uh, first question, is that a single garage on that last one? So it'd be at the bottom of your screen. Is that a, is that a single garage? Did I hear you say someone might, maybe a couple of them, single garage, or they're all do, uh, double garages?
No, all double garages. So, so each unit would have a garage.
The second question I had about that is, I walked through that little, I got, I'll call it a runoff or a slew, whatever's over there, and I can kind of see where it, is there a pipe that goes underneath Eldorado over to that little creek? Cause there's a, a box culvert down there by the first, uh, that new driveway that the, um, state put in and all that. So I was wondering, does that water runoff from the hill over this side go underneath the street into a piping over into that creek to go down to that box culvert?
Yeah. Since this, um, has come to our attention, we have been doing some investigating over there, and we have discovered that there is a pipe. Um, actually, it's a small box that exists, but the outflow is, um, is lower than the surrounding, um, area, and so it doesn't drain well, and so it's silted in through the years. So we're looking at, uh, what could be done to open that back up and, and address that issue.
I, I noticed there's two big sections of, of concrete pipes sticking in the woods back there. Uh, I didn't know if that was, at one time, gonna go through there's, they're either eight or ten feet long. If you, if you walk back in there, the, it's sitting right, they're sitting right next to each other. There's an old bumper laying next to it, too?
Yeah, I'm not for sure what that might be.
And I, I saw how it was, uh, silting away that one great big oak tree, uh, on that, the, uh, I guess I would call it the south side of that, for, but, lack of a better word, a slew or whatever it is there, so. And then the, the third thing I, the last thing I have on this run, I saw that, is there's a bunch of like, uh, maybe, uh, shot rock or excavated rock off of that side in piles. Um, how much cleanup will they do into that without disturbing a lot of those trees? Cause there's one great big tree that's fallen over. I've seen that. But there's a lot of like, big boulder rocks that was shot or cleared off at one time in there. Is that involved in that cleanup at all? Is that just there for, uh, erosion purposes? Do you know?
I'm not familiar enough with the site to be able to answer that question directly.
Uh, Dave, there, it's mostly on, uh, the bottom part of that screen where the lots get really long and back toward that, the longer parts of it's where, is where I was, uh, most of it I saw.
Okay. Well, we can certainly go out and take a look at that and have more information for next time.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions on item C? Item D, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning twenty-two point five-one acres of land located in the twenty-nine-hundred block of Route CC from RU Rural to RS2 Low Density Residential.
All right. We'll go straight to you, Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Mayor. So up on the screen is the property highlighted with the blue line. So it's located about a quarter of a mile, uh, south of Route C on Highway CC. So up at the top of the screen is Route C. Uh, here's Highway one seventy-nine that goes through and makes a sharp curve, you know, going to the, to the east there. And so, uh, the property has frontage on Route CC. Uh, it's currently zoned an RU Rural zoning designation. The, this bill would rezone the property to an RS2, a Single Family Residential Zoning Designation. The purpose of the request is to, uh, subdivide and develop the property with single-family homes. The applicant is Mr. Dave Burks, local developer. So, uh, this is a aerial photo of the property. Uh, you'll notice there's a bit of a, a bit of a ridge line, kind of going through, uh, through the site downhill, uh, right there. And so, uh, if rezoned, uh, the, uh, develop, the, the property owner would, would intend to pursue development of the property, and, uh, to that effect, applied for a preliminary subdivision plat along with the rezoning that was, uh, approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. And so this is a preliminary subdivision plat. I'll zoom in, and so this is a colorized version of the, the preliminary plat. And so it would envision, uh, construction of a road, uh, down through, kind of along that ridge line, ending in a cul-de-sac bulb. Uh, toward the end of that would be a, uh, stormwater detention basin constructed. Uh, utilities would be extended to, to serve the property. Sewer lines extended, uh, from the east to get to this property would be extended through the property with easements, uh, going on to the property boundary, so allowing for future connection to the sewer system for adjacent properties. And, uh, along with, uh, lots along each side of that street, there would be a small number of lots, uh, three, now located with just direct access, direct frontage on Route CC. And so a total of twenty-six lots are envisioned with the preliminary subdivision plat. And again, the bill in front of you is for a rezoning of the property to that single-family residential zoning district, and then if approved, uh, would envision a, a subdivision plat coming through the process and appearing in front of the council at a future date. Uh, this, uh, rezoning application was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April thirteenth meeting, and was recommended for approval on a vote of eight to zero, and this is scheduled for a public hearing, uh, in front of the city council on May fifteenth. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Allers?
How far, how far in front of that first stoplight is that then, Eric? Is that before all those stoplights on that overpass? Coming down Route C? I, I don't have any of those in front of me there, not on my, um, iPad.
So, the stoplights on Route C, uh, there, there are a total of three that, that would be shown on the screen. One at Route CC and C and Rock Ridge, uh, one at the on-off ramp on one side of the highway, and then the other, the on-off ramp at the other side. And so it's about a quarter mile from that, that Rock Ridge Road, Route CC stoplight, uh, down to the property.
With the amount of traffic there, do you, for, in that driveway going in there, is that good? Any concerns there?
Any?
No, we don't have any particular concerns. Um, you know, certainly Route CC is a state highway, um, and MoDOT would have, uh, ultimate control over, um, you know, that roadway connecting to their system. But as you can see on the screen, um, the character of that street is, um, generally residential houses fronting the street, uh, on the opposite side. And so this would be a continuation, and to some extent, of what already exists on the opposite side of the street.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we will move ahead to item E, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter three of the city code pertaining to temporary signs.
Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Mayor. So this particular, uh, bill actually originated at the Public Works and Planning Committee, and then after, after being heard and, uh, recommended for approval at that, by that body, or, or sending on to the council, was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the advice of the law department, uh, as its amendments to, uh, to signage, which is heavily rooted in zoning. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, heard this, and, uh, is now being forwarded on to the council. So that's kind of the route of, of this bill. This bill would amend chapter three with respect to temporary signage, uh, by permitting advertising flags at the rate of one advertising flag per frontage per commercial property, basically. So commercial properties would be able to place, uh, the advertising flags, sometimes referred as feather flags, uh, on their property frontage. It would also permit yard signs, so the smaller yard signs that you can see, typically made of, of cardboard or something, uh, generally smaller than about five square feet, at the rate of one per business. So if there's a multiple unit building, commercial building, uh, that each business would kind of have opportunity to, to have a yard sign along the frontage. And then it would also increase the size of certain temporary signs that are granted to, uh, certain uses within residential zoning districts, uh, such as churches, apartment buildings, you know, government buildings, uh, things like that. It's currently capped at a twenty-five square foot limit for a, for a temporary sign for these, these, you know, almost, you know, almost non-residential uses in residential districts, and would, uh, raise that from twenty-five square feet to a thirty-two square foot cap. And so this, uh, these items were, or this bill, was, uh, heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April thirteenth meeting, uh, was recommended for approval by that body on a vote of seven to one, and is scheduled for a public hearing in front of the city council on May fifteenth.
Questions? Comments? All right. We'll move to item F, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of McCarty View subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
All right, try on a roll one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So up on the screen is, uh, the property that this bill pertains to, highlighted in blue. And so, uh, it's located basically at the junction of McCarty Street and St. Louis Road. Daisy Delight is located right there, so just back off from that. There's a couple apartment buildings located on the St. Louis Road frontage that were formerly part of this property, uh, was divided off by administrative lot splits, so still owned by the same people. Um, but, uh, this request pertains to what's left of that property, uh, highlighted in blue. This bill would approve a subdivision plat of that property, uh, of three lots. And, uh, so this is the subdivision plat, uh, shown, kind of on top of the air photo. The air photo's a little grainy, but here's those two apartment buildings located right there. Uh, but, uh, again, they're not part of the plat. The plat would approve three lots, uh, two of them with frontage on McCarty Street, right there and there, and then one with frontage on St. Louis Road, right there. And so the intent of the, uh, the, the company, or the, the people that own this is to, uh, construct a residential duplex on each of the lots, so a total of three residential duplexes. Uh, was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April thirteenth meeting, uh, was recommended for approval on a vote of eight to zero. As a subdivision plat, it is not subject to public hearing requirement, so it'll appear, uh, the May fifteenth, uh, meeting under bills pending. Uh, but we did, uh, take the liberty of doing a notification process on this particular request, and so sending notices out to property owners within a hundred and eighty-five feet, uh, basically informing them of the agenda item at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? I'd just like to make one comment. We have the vice chair of Planning and Zoning here, Ms. Quigg. I know you guys had a long meeting. These projects fit into what we have been talking about, which is housing in this community, and, I mean, I think eleven of us understand the role that public sector plays, but seeing private developers step up and helping us address these issues is really exciting. I know Councilman Lester is, has been our liaison to planning and zoning for a couple of years, so I just appreciate all the work that, that you're doing to work, and Mr. Baron certainly is an expert in this area, and exciting things are coming, so thank you. Councilman Mealy?
Did you say that the owner would be, is the same for the existing apartment complexes in these duplexes?
That's correct.
Do we, this might be a question for our police team. Do we, um, do we know offhand if those duplexes are, you know, problem locations? Are, are there a lot of calls out there to those two locations?
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, I, we could certainly look that up and, and let you all know, but to my knowledge, it's not one of the hotter spots that we respond to in town.
All right. Thank you.
All set? All right. Item G, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a drainage control easement on the property addressed as two-eleven Oscar Drive in the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Thank Mr. Bang.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, when this property was subdivided, there was a drainage easement, a stormwater easement, um, along its Southern Third. The way the property developed around this particular property, um, uh, the drainage has been taken in a different direction, and so this easement has not been used and is, it doesn't appear to be needed. Um, the business owner is looking to expand their building, and so, uh, if the easement were to be vacated, they could do that. If not, um, there, it would be, uh, an interference, uh, for that expansion project. So there, seeing no public use for the easement, it appears that it would be reasonable to, uh, vacate that easement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. That'll move us on to bills pending, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a two-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six-dollar-and-seventy-six-cent agreement, source well contract with armor equipment for purchase and installation of wastewater televising equipment.
Mr. Bang?
Um, yes, this contract would allow us to replace, um, some of our, uh, video equipment, um, our cameras. We use them to, um, inspect our sanitary sewer lines, and we also use them to inspect, uh, stormwater pipes. Um, it gives us the ability then to, um, to know what those pipes look like and, and plan our lining projects and our other replacements, uh, of those systems and keep those all in good shape. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, this bill is before you.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
All right. Sounds like a majority, so thanks. Item B, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two.
In ordinance dissolving the liquor control board and assigning responsibilities and duties of the liquor control board to the finance director.
And we'll go to the finance director. Welcome.
Thank you. This bill would abolish the liquor control board and assign the administrative duties and responsibilities of the board to the finance director, with the exception of hearings on suspensions and revocations, which would still go before the city administrator. It would follow the same administrative process we use for things like business licensing. Again, administrative duties, we're trying to do this before the May deadline for all of the liquor licenses needing to be renewed, and it did pass through the administration committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir.
In addition, uh, it would be the intent of staff to follow up with the city council to make, uh, the appropriate, uh, corresponding, uh, changes to the code. Uh, the, the code drafting project is a little bit more intense than just the, uh, the concept, so, um, it, it would be the intention to bring a, a further bill to just follow up and clean up with the language at, at a, uh, future time.
Thank you. Councilman Allers?
And the, the state and the city, are they due at the same time of, or do they have to apply for the state first, and that's another time that's gotta be done, or do you, is it run about the same time for you all, or?
Not really sure what the timeframe is for the renewal on the state. I can tell you that when someone applies for a new liquor license with the city, they have to present their state license before we'll actually issue the city license.
Thank you.
All right. Bill is before you. We need a roll call vote.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item thirteen, informal calendar, there, nothing on the calendar, Texas, item fourteen, resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one.
A resolution authorizing the approval of successor directors to the St. Mary's Hospital Community Improvement District.
I believe that's you, Mr. Mall.
Yes, um, so, under the development agreement and petition for the, uh, St. Mary's Hospital Community Improvement District, um, it is the city council's responsibility to name the board of directors. This is, uh, upon receiving a recommended slate of directors who are owner representatives, uh, of the, uh, property owners within the CID. And so for the, uh, St. Mary's Hospital Community Improvement District, um, the, the, uh, the property owners have designated, and the, uh, CID has approved the slate of Mike Farmer and Bud Farmer for terms ending in twenty twenty-seven.
All right, you have the resolution before you. We'll need a action item. We'll need an action item if you want to push it forward.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do a roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Thank you, the resolution passes. Go to item B, resolution 2023-2.
A resolution authorizing the approval of successor directors to the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District.
And Mr. Melman?
Thank you. Very similar to the previous resolution. This resolution approves a slate of directors who are overall representatives for the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District. Also, the nominated property owner representatives are Mike Farmer and Bud Farmer for terms ending in 2027.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Spencer. Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Perfect, resolution passes. We've got to item C, resolution 2023-3.
A resolution authorizing the city to enter into a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with Central Bank for certain parks' equipment.
Mr. Spalding, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to authorize our Parks and Recreation Commission to approve a lease purchase through Central Bank. We're going to purchase the Toro Rough mower. It's going to replace an old piece of equipment from the two, from 2000.
All right, questions, comments? Again, the resolution is before you.
I move to approve.
Thank you. They hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilman. All right, roll call vote.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
All right, resolution passes. Item 15, presentations from the gallery, I don't believe we have any. Item 16, council and staff discussion on presentation topics, I don't believe we have any. Takes us item 17A, new business. Mr. Melman, did you have any comments, nominations? I know we talked a little bit about it in the pre-meeting of the process from here.
Right, so this was put on the calendar for availability for the city council if it wanted at this time to proceed with nominations for the fourth council, our fourth ward council member. Not necessary this evening, but at some point in time prior to the public hearing, there will need to be, or sorry, at some time prior to the vote, there needs to be a nomination and that will lead into the voting process, as indicated in the pre-meeting to Councilman Spencer. If, if there is a desire to have the public hearing prior to the nominations, I think that's an amendment to the process that is acceptable. So once again, up to the city council, kind of how they want to handle that. But the space here tonight is available for use, but is not necessary.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hensley.
Can you repeat the part you said about amending the process in response to Councilman Spencer?
Right, right, right. So essentially, the, the, I believe the information that Ms. Donaldson sent out indicated that there would be nominations, and then those people who are nominated would be subject to the public hearing. What Councilman Spencer suggested, could the city council have everyone who's applied be subject to the public hearing and then do nominations? That's what I was referring to, and it's kind of just switching those, those two items in, in, in time. I, I think that's an acceptable amendment.
Councilman Spencer.
And I would just, for full disclosure, I think we, can we go ahead and make that motion tonight to go ahead and push that full slate of candidates to that next process, to the public hearing, so that it's, it's well communicated tonight and?
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, sir.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Deacon, did you have a?
I would just want to concur, that I would like to have the full slate put forward.
Okay. Is that a roll call vote?
Yeah, good idea.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the table, but is there any other comments? All right, roll call vote.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Donaldson, reach out to each candidate and let them know that they can have an invitation to the May 15th council meeting to stand for a public hearing.
Will do.
Great, thank you. Any other new business items? Councilman Spencer.
Yeah, due to the continued parking issues in the downtown area, I would like for this body to entertain an action tonight to place a 30-day moratorium on parking enforcement on the unmetered time zones in downtown area. The purpose for this action is to send a very intentional message to our colleagues in the state Capitol and their constituents that come to interact with the representatives, that we are taking their issues and concerns seriously. We need to answer their concerns as it relates to the questionable enforcement of the unmetered parking areas within our downtown. And some of us on the council feel we need an undisputable enforcement tool and policy to move forward with rebuilding the trust from within the legislative and visiting communities. So we feel there is a sense of urgency for us to act, and I would encourage my colleagues to support this action tonight.
Second.
Can I third?
All right, so that was an informed emotion. And we've got a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you, may I just make one quick comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I support this limited-time action, which I think would certainly be renewable if at the end of that 30-day or so period. Were you wanting to go strictly 30 days or maybe to the next council meeting, the first council meeting in June?
I, I would be more comfortable with that first council meeting in June.
And my main concern is about what appears to be inconsistent or faulty methods of tracking the amount of time people are actually spending parked in each unmetered timed zone. I've heard too many consistent stories from extremely reputable people who were completely bewildered to come out to a ticket for violating the 90-minute parking zone, whichever block they parked on, when they happened to park there twice in the same day, but only for five or 10 minutes at a time. And if we don't have a consistent, reliable way to track time, that is not the fault of people parking downtown. And that is something that we need to find a solution to or find a different way to do it. So I think the idea of about a month's time to have a long overdue conversation and try to find ways to fix obvious problems with common sense solutions is, is the right thing to do at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Wiseman.
Thank you for those comments. And has, has that been a direction to staff? And is that, other than an intention, has that been a direction in Public Works that we're going to be doing a study or fixing it or addressing it in some way?
It has with previous chairman of Public Works, Mayor Fitzwater, and with the new current Public Works Committee, we are taking a very in-depth look at parking as a whole, but also that enforcement issue as it relates to the unmetered time zones, so.
I guess specifically, what are you guys going to be looking at by the time you get to the next Public Works? I mean, is this, is this legitimately going to be suspended for 34 days? Or is this looking like a six-month period or?
I think we kind of wanted to do it on a, on a month-to-month basis until we can, until staff can take, get the time to, to look at alternatives of a way of enforcement. So, you know, hopefully this will kind of maybe push that along a little bit further. Thank you.
Just to respond to the previous public? I guess I'd turn that on. Previous Public Works Committee has laid those issues out. There were not a lot of responses coming back, so, I mean, we were kind of waiting for. This issue's been out there, there's not been a solution, so this is a next step. I know Mr. Melman wanted to speak, and then Councilmember Schwartz, so.
Yeah, I just want to second what Councilman Hensley and Spencer said. I, it would be my preference to, to, in response to Councilwoman Wiseman, would be to do something from January 1st to June 1st on all parking downtown, because quite frankly, the situation we have, I think, is a multitude of state workers are parking in, in metered parking and free parking downtown. And I don't think we should penalize people who want to come to our home of state government and make their voice heard at our Capitol by giving them a $5 parking ticket just because maybe the legislature's running long, or they have to wait for a hearing, or it's a packed hearing on a specific issue. So my preference would be to go further. I'm with Councilman Spencer when it comes to looking at this for 30 days, but we're not going to fix it in 30 days. I, I think this is going to be an ongoing issue, no matter what we do. I, I just think that during session, we ought to look at a specific set, or specific area of parking in the downtown region, and put a moratorium on it for those six months.
Did you want to make comment, you want to wait? I saw Councilman Allers and then Councilman Hensley.
I, I just want to concur with Councilman Hensley and then with Councilman Wiseman, and then what Mark, Councilman Schwartz just said, Ron. I think too many times they are, with the tickets and all that, they're disenfranchised from even leaving here as fast as they can without, you know, I think most of them would want to stay here, spend money, go out to dinner and all that stuff. But with the amount of tickets some of them get, they can't wait to get out of Jeff City fast enough. And I think when, if we pass this tonight, maybe with an amendment about, I don't know how long, special sessions, if we can include that, when, if the legislature goes into special session, usually what, September? If we can include that with it. And then just to let them know, hey, we are seriously looking at this issue, and hopefully we can meet with some of our state reps about maybe parking garage issues that we can do jointly, or the state has some idea to help out alleviate all that around the Capitol for the lobbyists and the visitors who come to this town to watch the legislation and being done. I think it's, it's worth this whole council and starting out with the Public Works to go through that process. I, I supported them.
Well, I don't want to usurp the discussions from our, our committee chair. I did spend a couple of years there. There are, and we have presented to the state, there's three issues that we think we need to address. Metered parking, surface lots, so how we utilize those, and then garages. But those discussions are underway with the state of Missouri. It's probably not going to result in dollars and/or action this year because we're so late in the budget process. But we are certainly on the radar for next budget cycle in the state. And I think Councilman Spencer will do a good job of kind of picking up where Public Works left off on those discussions. Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. If I could just speak for a moment to a comment that Councilman Allers just made. I, I totally get the, perhaps thought to connect this with, with the legislature, because obviously it's been a unique topic of conversation up there for, for our city. What I like about the 30-day period is, you know, first of all, Councilman Spencer's testimony before a Senate committee a few weeks ago. I mean, I think, I think you were only sitting at that microphone for about 10 seconds, but the message that you delivered was, we recognize that there are some problems. Please give us the opportunity to, to fix them. I think, I think that message that we are actually starting to walk the walk on that comes through loud and clear with an initial 30-day moratorium, so that we can begin addressing it. There would be nothing stopping us from issuing another month moratorium on, on June 5th, and then, and so on, until there are actual solutions. But just to keep things clear, clean and siloed, I might want to keep the issues of our interaction, the city's interactions with the legislature, any future discussions about possible state funding for parking garages, and then how the city administers and enforces its, its parking codes just separate as much as we can. I, I think they'll get the message if we, if we take this action this evening.
Councilman Lester.
So my understanding is the parking downtown 90 minutes is, is mainly for the businesses downtown where customers can come and do their business, and there'll be parking and inviting those customers back regularly. And I mean, that's certainly how I use it. I think when I use it, I'm, I'm usually there for less than 30 minutes, but, but, but sometimes an hour or so. But my question is, is what, what has been input from the business community downtown related to this proposal? Because I've not heard it at Downtown Business Association or anything where it's been talked about.
Councilman Spencer.
It, it has not been conveyed to, to the Downtown Association. Again, a little bit to the, the mindset and thought process of trying to separate the, the, focusing on the legislature or focusing on the downtown community or businesses. We have a parking issue, and, and I think it's just very important that we take this opportunity tonight to send a very strong message to our colleagues at the state Capitol to, to show them that we're serious about it. And so, you know, it was, it was kind of a, a timing issue more than anything. I thought, you know, while they're still in session, you know, we could, we could alleviate some of that still. I think there's a couple of weeks left possibly with, with that session, so. But to, you know, to be more direct, that has not been posed to the Downtown Association. And, you know, I, I, I don't see the, the, the harm in, in, in doing that. You know, we can, we can communicate at a later time with them to get their input and their, and their involvement, by all means. But right now is just a kind of a, an aggressive approach, if you will.
Yeah, I, I, so I'm just, I am concerned that then, then those spaces will be taken up and by people not doing business downtown at those businesses, which is why they're been created like that. So I just think that's a, that's a serious concern, and, and that input is really needed for any decisions that we make.
Councilman Mealy and then Councilman Hensley.
So a moratorium on enforcement, I think, is just going to take state employees and move them up from the Truman lot to downtown, or wherever you're putting the moratorium on enforcement for parking. So I just feel like there's going to be a diversion of folks. And I could partially, you know, I, I might agree with the 30-day moratorium to, you know, but I don't really see what value that's going to provide to our legislature when, you know, we put out a 30-day moratorium, you know, even if there's not a public notice for that or whatever. It, you know, the word gets out, and then every state employee is, is uptown. So I don't know if that's going to be an immediate reaction, take a week, or, or how that'll work. But that's a concern I have.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you, and I'll address Councilman Mealy's point first. I, I worked in the Truman Building for a couple of years. I worked in Broadway for eight or nine years. And, you know, the lots weren't, didn't always seem perfect. But I can't imagine walking three or four blocks up a hill to my car when I had parking a block or two from my office building. But, but maybe some of them will, who knows? To Councilman Lester's point, though, there's, there are certainly several different interests at, you know, at play here. Certainly cannot deny the interest that downtown business owners have in their, in their customers and their patrons being able to find parking. I, I think an equal interest, though, should be in making sure that their patrons are not being ripped off. So hopefully what they'll see is that we are focused on identifying, assessing, and solving a problem, and that this is limited in time. I mean, it, it could be renewed, but this particular? I mean, it could be renewed, but this particular moratorium would be limited in time and would take further action down the road to reinstate. So, definitely respect all of the interests involved, but I, it just doesn't seem like we're, like we're going to get the momentum to actually get something fixed here if we just keep allowing it to happen without any change in, in the flow. Thank you.
Councilman Lester.
So, only thing, I, it sounds like, and I believe there is a problem related to how it's enforced, but I do, I do have a question. How many complaints have we, have we received? How big a problem is it? But it does sound like there is a problem with enforcement. We need to figure something out with that.
Councilman Hensley.
If the Parking Division would care to explain its method for tracking time and prove to us over the next thirty days that we are wrong in our understanding, I'd certainly love to hear it. But when this has been raised in conversation in the past, it's essentially been acknowledged that that is how it's done and that we're not aware of a better alternative.
Mr. Melman.
Thanks. Got a couple of things, but first of all, on Councilman Hensley's comment, so, so are you referring to kind of the situation where someone parks, does some business pretty short-term, leaves? You know, maybe they're only there ten minutes. They leave and then maybe later in the day, they come back and do a different piece of business. That's the situation to, okay. So, so there is no, without speaking for Mr. Smith or Mr. Marash, I do not believe there is any fault or there is any mistake or is there's any inaccuracy. That is how it's designed. So, essentially, once someone parks in those unmetered spots, they park, they have up to ninety minutes, but once they have used any time in that, in those spots, they have used their allocated time for the day. That is the design. This is brought up several years ago and, and we, we changed the code to make that more clear and I believe we accompanied that with some signage changes to make that more clear that that is the expectation. If that is not the city council's desire, it is wholly within the city council's purview to change that. And so, what I, what I am telling you, I believe it is working as designed. And essentially, the idea, I believe, is to promote turnover of spots so there's ample opportunity for a variety of people to use the parking in the downtown because the concern is, and, and, you know, this is something I think's brought up several times, is there are people that use it in a way that is very innocuous, like you described, and I've heard those complaints myself from very reputable members of the community. But there's also a segment of the population that does the rotation dance where they kind of move from this spot, move to that spot and essentially use up spots within the same territory or parking zone, but try to get ahead of parking enforcement by just moving the car around. That's what it's designed to not allow. And so, if the city council wants to change that and how, and to allow for a aggregate of ninety minutes, you know, five minutes here, five minutes there, you know, hour here, hour and a half there, whatever it is, it's completely within the city council's purview to enact. We can do that. But it's not, it's not a matter of, of, there's something being wrong. It's, that's how it's designed. So, just to kind of, and so that kind of gets to the second point, is during this thirty-day moratorium, staff needs a very clear indication of what we are looking at so that way we gather the necessary information, so that way we can tell you, okay, we've done this moratorium and here's what we've seen and so that way it provides you valuable information so you can use that in your decision-making process. You know, it would be a waste to just have a moratorium and then not gather any information out of it. So, in order for the moratorium to be valuable, which I think it, it sounds like it could be very valuable, staff needs to know, what are we looking for here? And I would have a suggestion that we engage with the Downtown Association and then any, any other members, you know, people that do business in downtown and, you know, I'm not sure how that would work with the legislature, but anyone who is affected by this to provide us feedback. This is what we are seeing, this is what, how this is affecting our customers, this is how it's affecting our constituents. So that way we are coming back to the council with, with information that we can do something with because ultimately, we all want the same thing, a viable and operational parking operation that provides fair opportunity to access the businesses and the state government offices that they need to get to. And so, that would be my, my main request is let staff know exactly what we're looking for, so that way we can get the information you guys need.
I saw Councilman Hensley, then Councilman Schwartz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Melman, and I appreciate the explanation. I would love it if the Law Department could send us the code citations that explain how, explain essentially what you've just described because I've read, I read the signs, I would say every day, that might be a slight exaggeration, but it might also be totally accurate. And I can't see any indication from that sign that says, that warns someone that if you park here for twenty minutes, but the wrong twenty minutes, you're going to get a ticket for violating a ninety-minute zone. Maybe we need larger signs in order to, in order to accommodate all of the extra type. I'm also glad that you mentioned the, the zone hopping dance that we, is it a hop or dance? The zone hopping scheme that folks who work downtown go through every day, which does not actually free up any parking whatsoever downtown because the same car is parking downtown in essentially the same area, just on slightly different blocks and they can do that throughout the entire course of their workday. So, it's not accomplishing anything. It is hassling a downtown employee and it's removing them from their place of employment four or five times a day. So, I don't really see the point of it for anyone. But yes, the, to your first point though, I don't know how anyone could be warned about how you can violate that parking restriction by parking there for fewer than ninety minutes. And if that's the way it was designed, maybe I was on council at that point, maybe I wasn't. I don't recall that specifically, but whether I was or not, I questioned the designer and think that a better design is almost certainly available. And again, would, would love the citations to review exactly how, how code says you can violate it by parking there for less than the amount of time shown. Thanks.
Councilman Schwartz.
Yeah, I, I don't know who I should direct this to, if it's Ms. Perry or whoever, but I would like to get in, included to the rest of the council, a look at the revenue that is generated by parking, whether it be tickets, meters, parking garages, and then I want to see what our costs are, including salaries, fringe benefits, vehicles, equipment, everything that goes into the enforcement of parking. I just, I have a hard time believing that we're paying this, this freight the whole way with what we're collecting off citizens who quite frankly built the roads they're parking on. So, if we could get that information, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just.
Councilman Lester.
Downtown Business Association meets a week from Tuesday at seven forty-five.
Do you go to those meetings?
I, I do, yeah.
All right, we've got a motion. Did you restate your motion with the date or are you staying with the thirty-day?
I've transitioned it to the first meeting in June.
And the secondary is comfortable with that?
I am, thank you.
All right, you've got an action item in front of you on the table. Any other comments before we do a roll call? Councilman Mealy?
I just have to say, I, you know, am in full support of ideas to fix a big, big and ongoing problem. What I would be more comfortable with is having notice to the downtown businesses before something like this is decided upon. You know, we just, in this meeting tonight, talked about them being the backbone of our community and I think that upfront engagement would be helpful for me to, to be more comfortable with the decision.
Thank you. Councilman Spencer.
Hi, and I appreciate those comments. I'm, I'm comfortable with pursuing this and call for the question.
All right, the question's been called. Everybody clear on the motion?
This is a moratorium for all the unmetered parking in the downtown area. Is that, I got that right? Okay.
Until June fifth.
Until June fifth.
All right, roll call vote.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Hallers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
No.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Any other new business items? We do have closed session minutes that we'll need to act on, item number eighteen.
I move to approve those.
A motion to approve.
A second then.
And a second, and we'll need to do a roll call vote on those. All right, sorry, Councilman Hallers.
The three do, or I guess the two members, Mr. Melman, what are abstain or no or what do we, what do we do for our part that we weren't included in there?
If you weren't in it, it'd be appropriate for you, for you to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Hallers.
Abstain.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Abstain.
Schwartz.
Abstain.
Spencer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. I don't think we have any unfinished business. That leads us to Councilwoman Weisman.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you.